Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I call to order the city council meeting for Monday, June 15th, 2015. Apologize for being slightly delayed. We had a special meeting that just wrapped up and we had to do some housekeeping items in between. Could we have the roll call, please?
Mayor Pro-Tim Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Bruno.
Here.
Councilmember Clark.
Still here.
Councilmember Droscha.
Here.
Councilmember Ferris.
Present.
Councilmember Mulvaney.
Here.
Mayor Walz.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Will you please stand for the pledge of allegiance and invocation?
Almighty God, please bless Mr. Colburn and his wife, Betsy, as they move on and transition into his new position up in Traverse City. Watch over this council as we make important decisions and transition ourselves over the next several months. Watch and bless our nation's military wherever they may be stationed, and also our veterans. Amen.
Councilmembers, are there any announcements this evening? Councilmember Ferris.
This weekend, coming up, we have the farewell reception for Mr. Colburn from 2:00 to 6:00 here at City Hall. Everyone's welcome. And from 4:30 to 7:30, we have the steak dinner fundraiser at Darrell's, which I believe, well, I'm not sure whether it's the Promise Scholarship and the Relay for Life, but it's one of the two. And also on Saturday, we have the expo out at the Spartan Speedway. The chamber is participating and loves volunteers. And we also have the Relay for Life from 12:00 to 12:00, 12:00 noon to 12:00 midnight. So it's a nice weekend for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ferris. Any other announcements? Mayor Pro-Tim Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the last meeting that we'll have before the Fourth of July, so I wanted to remind the community that our Mason sesquicentennial celebration will continue over the Fourth of July holiday. On Thursday, July 2nd, there will be the Brothers of the Brush Beard Contest at 5:30 on the courthouse lawn. That will be followed by, at 6:00, the Thursday Night Live concert. On Friday evening, from 5:00 to 7:00, we will have a family and pet patriotic promenade on the Hay Hill Riverwalk. So come on out, experience the beautiful Riverwalk Trail in our parks on a, hopefully, what will be a beautiful Friday evening. On Saturday, we have a full day with the car show from early morning, 9:00 a.m., until I believe 4:00 in the afternoon, followed by the parade, which will be our Mason 150 Parade. That kicks off at 7:30. And then the fireworks display will occur at dusk, and they will be west of the, excuse me, east of the fairgrounds. That will be where the display will be held this year. And then finally, on Sunday, July 5th, the several churches are combining to have a combined worship service, and that will be held, I believe, at 9:30 a.m. at Mason United Methodist Church. And so we're encouraging individuals to be a part of that if you so desire, as well as a way to continue our sesquicentennial festivities. If you have any, if you want to know more about that, you can go to mason150.org, and you can see lots of events that will be posted on our Facebook page. Thank you.
Any other announcements? Councilmember Ferris.
Thank you. I neglected the blood drive on Thursday, followed by the concert on the courthouse lawn, of course, at 6:00. But the blood drive is from 11:15 to 5:15. Thank you. At St. James Church.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Mulvaney.
Just would like to say thanks to the Parks and Forest Department. They got the, the cemetery and the lawns are really looking great at this time. I think your summer help really paid off.
I would like to reiterate the obvious. This is Mr. Colburn's final council meeting here in Mason, due to his accepting the position in Traverse City. And, Mr. Colburn, I have had the pleasure of working with you for a number of years. I wish you the best, and I trust that you'll be able to put up with me calling on you for yet one more meeting to introduce things and give us your introduction on some of the incidents that are going on around the city. Good luck. Item number five is people from the floor. If there's anybody that wishes to speak, please approach the podium, give us your name and address, and allow approximately three minutes.
My name is Jack Carmichael. I live at 519 South Rogers Street here in Mason. I've come to briefly address you, members of the council. I know many of you because I voted for you. And it's a pleasure to come and speak about a town hall meeting, which has been called by Tom Conklin. I think many of you have gotten this notice in the mail. He sent it all around the city. It's going to be held on the 22nd of June on mineral rights. So some of you have been approached, perhaps, by the West Bay Exploratory Company about leasing your mineral rights under the city, under your lots in the city of Mason. And I know that was brought up at the last meeting of the council. So I wrote a letter to Marty Colburn about this. I want to pass it out to the council members, and I'm going to do that right now.
Thank you, Jack. Thank you. Thank you.
I spent many years as an American representative of working for the United Nations on industrial
development projects, environmental considerations of industrial development projects all over the world. I also served as a consultant to the Organization of American States and the World Bank. And in a few words, this proposed drilling project, which you talked about very briefly at the last council meeting, I believe, cries out for an environmental impact assessment. I know the well is going to be located outside of the city of Mason, but you must consider, as council members, what impacts this project is going to have affecting the city of Mason and its citizens. There are many, many questions that need to be raised in an environmental impact assessment. And don't expect voluntary answers to be coming from West Bay. West Bay has its own agenda, and I would submit that you wouldn't hire the fox to guard the hen house. So please read the letter. I hope you can consider some of the important aspects I mentioned in the letter about environmental impact assessment and this project, and I hope that you can come, all of you, to the town hall meeting on the 22nd of June at the Mason Area Historical Society, located at 200 East Oak Street, right here in Mason. Hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the floor that wishes to speak to the council this evening? Item six on the agenda is presentations. The 2014 Annual Report from the Mason Library. I'd like to introduce Cheryl Lyons and invite her to the podium to present their annual report.
Hello, and thank you. Is this on? Oops. It isn't on, is it?
It is.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you for having me tonight to speak to you. It's been three years since I have taken the job as the Mason Head Librarian. In just about a couple weeks, it'll be three years, and it continues to be such a pleasure to work with this community. I love going to work every day, and I love the patrons, the community, the town. There's just a real presence, as you all know, because you love it too, to working here. I'd like to introduce some Capillary District Library representatives that are here tonight. Maureen Herton, our director, Sally Trout, our vice chairperson, and Deb Blumquist, our chairperson, and they are here tonight as well. So I thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you, as I do every year, about the library and about our accomplishments from the previous year. It's already six months into this year, but we are discussing 2014 in this presentation. The number-one accomplishment of last year was really passing our millage. We had 77% support for the millage, 77%. And the city of Mason, actually, that community had, we had the highest support in the whole voting district for the library, and that was 83% support for the millage. So that is a real testament to how the city of Mason feels about the library and this community. Just some statistics from last year. Our circulation, materials circulated through the library, and these are physical materials, books, CDs, DVDs, magazines. We had 123,000 items circulated in our Mason branch there. We had 6,649 program attendees, so those are individual visits to library programs. That actually was the fourth-highest programming in the Capillary District Library system, even though Mason is the sixth busiest or the sixth-largest branch. So we actually do a lot of programming out of that location there. Visits to the library, these are individual visits. We had 96,352 individual visits to the library. It's about eight, a little over 8,000 a month. Capillary District Library highlights, as I mentioned, the passage of the millage. We also had a focus on STEM program. We hear a lot about that in schools, science, technology, mathematics, and now even arts are added into that. Our summer reading program had that as a focus last year, so the library saw a lot of interest from the community, children of all ages, in science and linking the library to science projects, science initiatives. One of the highlights of the Mason Library was that we got a self-checkout system at the library, and this means that you can go up to a person and check out your materials, but you can also go to a station about this size and check out your materials yourself. And this is nice when we have lines, which we do quite a bit at the library. It's nice for privacy. People can check things out without, knowing that no one else is going to see what they're checking out, and it provides just something, something technologically advanced that people get to engage in. Families really like it, children like it. At busy times, people love it. They come in, they scan their items, and they go. And it's been, it's been a real boon. We're up to about 40% of our checkouts via self-check at this point, but we're still having wonderful interactions with people across the desk as well. In fact, some people say, you know, I love this, but I also want to say hi every time I come in. And that's really our Mason Library. We've got that personalized service and that warm feeling that we have over there that's continued even with self-check. As part of that project, we put the holds out on the floor so people can get their holds, go to self-check and check out. We also rearranged the physical collection to meet the usage statistics. So adventure suspense is our highest circulating topic over there. People love adventure suspense. David Baldacci, James Patterson, and so we made the space for adventure suspense bigger. And we rearranged the whole collection to fit those statistics and put everything in alphabetical order, because librarians love alphabetical order. So we did that, too, and that was a project that I'm particularly proud of because it doesn't drive me nuts now. But no, it's been really, it's been really nice to have that. We've had patrons thank us for that because it makes more sense when you come in, and we have some nice signage that goes with that, too. One of the other wonderful things that happened last year was we had, and thanks to you, we had a roof replacement in the children's area, and that has been very wonderful and very dry, and we really appreciate that. So thank you very much, and it looks very good, too. A couple of things I just wanted to address before I go. I know I don't want to take too much of your time, but a lot of people ask me, is the library going away? Is it even worse now because of eBooks? And I think I talked about this a little bit last year, but I had to reflect a little bit when preparing this presentation and thought, you know, where are we at with that topic? What we're seeing is that electronic materials are growing exponentially, and we're seeing that with our statistics. Every month, the electronic usage grows and grows and grows, and this is eBooks, electronic magazines, electronic audiobooks. We've even added some new platforms for using that. Those are growing, but we're also seeing that now the library is the place for what we call digital literacy, which is a buzzword you probably hear out in society, and we use a lot in libraries. What we mean by that is we actually sit down, you can bring in your Kindle or your smartphone, and we sit down with you for a half-hour appointment, and we show you how to use your device and connect to our, to connect to the electronic resources. So the library has a role in, in some ways, holding the hand of the community and saying, okay, here are some new resources that are, that you're seeing. You're seeing them in the news, you're seeing them on Facebook, you're seeing them everywhere. Do you want to use them? You don't have to. We still have a Baldacci paperback or a hardcover for you, but if you do, we're going to help you use that, which is really how libraries, that's sort of a role they've always had. It's just changed a little bit with this new format. And so we are making appointments every week to help people with one-on-one help. We help them download attachments to job applications, but we also help a lot with electronic materials. So the focus over at that library, if I had to say two things for last year, was literacy. And that sounds really old-fashioned, but one is this digital literacy piece. It's saying, okay, cattle's jumped on. We have all these electronic things besides print, physical materials, but we're also focusing on early literacy. I know I talked about that last year, too, and I probably always will, coming here, because that's a place where the library, the library has a niche. We can fill in on literacy. Schools are very busy, schools are doing wonderful things, they're focusing on literacy, but the library is a place where we can actually work with parents outside of that school environment and foster literacy from zero on up. So we're focusing on that a lot. I do the early literacy, baby time, story time, and I see family members and community members utilizing that services every week of the year is my story time, pretty much. And they come in and they get introduced to learning, really, not just books, but that concept of learning, and it starts then and then it goes up through all the programming that the library offers. So we've got that traditional literacy piece, and then we have the digital literacy, and that's just sort of when I thought, what did we do last year? Those are the two things I think we focused on the most. And I did also wanted to take a moment to say thank you to Marty and for working with the library, and I wish you all the best in your new position. Thank you so much, and thanks to all of you for supporting the library. Anybody have any questions?
Any questions? Mayor Pro-Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Lyons, for your, for your report and your presentation this evening. Just one comment and then one question for you. The first is I want to commend you and your staff on the fine work that you do. I hear from residents, especially after the tedious week with the boiler, that your staff was quite pleasant and quite patient and quite accommodating, even with all that was going on. So kudos to the hard work that you and the staff provide at our particular library branch. The one question I did want to ask you tonight is, do you, do you see any accessibility issues with regard to our senior citizens in the current facility? I know I've received, at least on two separate occasions, just inquiries on how we can make library services a little bit more accessible to, to the senior community, whether that even means partnering with, with the city to use this space if, if necessary. And so I just wanted to ask if you have any thoughts on that, or if you foresee any, any areas where there could be cooperation moving forward to better provide services to our, to our senior residents.
Okay, thank you. The answer to that is yes. We hear, I hear from community members, I wouldn't say frequently, but, but enough, when they encounter generally needing to use the restroom as a problem. Going down the stairwell is a problem for a lot of people. It's also a problem with programming. I do a lot of programming in the basement auditorium, and there's an issue with some seniors and people with some limited mobility of any age getting down that stairwell to the program room. What we do now is we call people and we say, when we have a program, we say, do you have any need for accommodation? If you do not think you can use the stairs, we'll have the program in the upstairs reading room, which isn't quite as good of a space for programming, but we do that anyway. But yes, we do hear from patrons that they have a hard time getting down the stairs, and once down the stairs, it's not considered a barrier-free restroom, so it doesn't have the bars and things to, if you were to need just support using the restroom, it's really challenging. So, yeah, I think that's something that we've discussed, we discussed a bit with Marty in a meeting that we had with Cattle, Cattle and the city of Mason, some representatives. And I know that we've talked about it at Cattle, too, with our facilities, our facilities director, and Maureen and I have discussed it, too, that something, really, really a dream and a goal for us is to make this library accessible to more people. Even some things such as the ramp that we have, it's a challenging ramp if you were to be in a wheelchair to get up the ramp and then to actually get the door open, because we don't have one of the push button. I don't know exactly what the technical terminology for that is, but it, you know, a push button to open the door. You'd have to figure out how to open the door and navigate the wheelchair. So we don't see a lot of usage of the library by people in wheelchairs. I think it's very challenging. We do have a sign-up right now that the restrooms here are available. We leave that up, of course, all the time, but, but there are hours where that is not a possibility.
Well, thank you for that, that response, and I would just challenge not only Cattle, but us as a city and as a council, even though we're in the middle of transition, to look at ways that we can partner with you, to even consider making use of this space in here if it's not being used for other purposes. We do have an accessible building, we have accessible first floor, meeting area, and accessible restrooms, and so I see potential opportunity for collaboration and the use of this facility in partnership with you. And I would like to at least start the ball rolling on some additional conversations, whether it be with our interim administrator or with our permanent administrator in the fall. And so I just wanted to get your take on that and also share my commitment to working on that issue.
Are there any other questions for Cheryl? Thank you, Cheryl.
Item seven is the consent agenda. It's a rather lengthy one, one of the lengthier ones that I recall, consisting of the approval of the minutes from both the special council meeting and the regular council meeting of June 2nd, 2015, approval of bills, resolution 2015-33 to designate authorizing signatories, resolution 2015-34 to amend the 2014-2015 fiscal year budget, resolution 2015-35, return delinquent water and sewer bills to July tax roll, resolution 2015-36 to levy 1% tax administration fee, resolution 2015-37, return miscellaneous bills to July 2015 tax roll, motion to accept the 2014 annual report by Cheryl Lyons for the Mason Library, motion for a street closure for the annual car show, motion for a street closure for the 2015 Relay for Life, motion for a street closure, Mason Farmers Market Association, and a motion for the directory of charges. Is there anything that you wish to have pulled from this agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Droscha.
I'd like to pull the directory of charges, please.
Okay. Anything else? I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda without item L, the directory of charges. Mayor Pro-Tim.
I move to approve the consent agenda as amended with the removal of item L, the directory of charges.
Second.
Motion is made. Second, to approve the consent agenda without the directory of charges. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. That brings us to item 7L, the directory of charges. Councilmember Droscha.
I have a question, and it has to do, I'm trying to find where in the packet the directory of charges is.
Looking through.
Yeah. I think it's on page three of the directory of charges is what I'm looking for. My question is, and the charges with the parks is where I'm at, is there a charge for using the Rayner Park Rotary Stage? If so, what is it? Where does it show that? Where does the directory of charges show that? It doesn't.
It's on the city's one.
It's not in the directory of charges. If it's not in the directory of charges, we can't charge it. And the second question is, how do we get to $100 when it's only $25 for the gazebo in Griffin Park?
Want to make a motion to approve it at $25?
I think I would.
Mr. Colburn.
I know staff was having a discussion on this very point, and I recall in the past, I believe those numbers are correct that you were referencing, but I don't see it in this particular document. Yeah, Eric, if you recall, I know we had it in there at one point, but go ahead.
Actually, I don't believe that it's actually been entered to the directory of charges. I know it's been under discussion. At this point, it has, the discussion has been to rent it as if it were the resident pavilion, you know, for Rayner, but I know that an actual agreement is what we, is what we want to get in place. There's a, the pavilion's right there, that's what we have a rental charge for in the park. So it's another one of the facilities at the park. So in the interim, that's what, that's what you probably saw in the newsletter, but as far as an actual agreement, there is not one that has been come up with to this point.
Allow me to posit a suggestion that we make that stage $25. Our brass quintet has been holding its annual fall concert at Griffin Park, and we rent that for $25. We're considering moving it to the stage, perhaps a little nicer facility, so we might be willing to pay a little more, but certainly, we, we wouldn't pay $100 to perform a community service concert. You see where I'm, see where I'm going with that? We'd pay 25, that's fine. We can afford that, but, but $100 seems a little steep for groups to perform there.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Clark.
Before you take that up, John, I would, what I'd like to suggest, because this is a, this is a resource, it's a commodity that the city has available, that I don't, I think we want to be very, very careful about who gets in there and what they use it for. If you make, if you put something like that facility up, and anybody can rent it for $25, the next class reunion or whatever, their family reunion, they're going to be crawling all over it, it's not going to get used in the way that it was, was originally intended to be used. I would think that, I think Eric says there have been some discussions going on, and I, and I appreciate that, and I'd like to develop those discussions even further, but in the case of, like your quintet, if you're going to put on a, a community service, I would think that something even a pared-down application for, like we do for street closures for those kinds of things, a pared-down application for that could be reviewed and administratively could be said, absolutely, you can use it for that. That's what it was designed to be used for, rather than opening it up to the general public that really, otherwise, if you do that, you just don't know what you're going to get out of there. If some, and trust me, I like all kinds of music, but I know from dealing with sun-dried and what have you, what the community will tolerate and what they won't tolerate, but if you had some head-banging band, skinheads, whatever, come in and one of the residents rented it for them for 25 bucks, and they're down there smashing instruments and just creating, wreaking havoc, I don't think that's what we want to have go on in that facility or in the park facility as a whole. So before you, before you go there, I would ask that we, we let, let these discussions continue, and maybe a couple of us, maybe you and I, because of our musical backgrounds and what have you, could be included in those discussions, and we could develop some kind of a, a policy that would allow that, that facility to be used in the spirit with which it was designed and which, with which it was built. Because like I said, I know that I have, I have additional equipment that I've accumulated over the years that I'm going to donate. I'm just, I have to get with the electrician to have it installed, and if you put the kind of stuff in there and you open it up to anybody, then the stuff's going to get wrecked, and, and so I think you want to be careful.
Councilmember Ferris.
Just two questions for the committee or whoever.
Just two questions for the committee or whoever sets it up to ask us. Are we covering the electric costs for whatever? And I know when we rent Aurelius Town Hall, that they, they have a refundable deposit, so you actually pay for the deposit and you get that deposit back if it's in good shape at the end, and maybe we could consider using that, some portion of that as a refundable deposit, just as a suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually had a question on a separate matter. I noticed that on page 13, that under our refuse collection per dwelling unit, that there is an increase in that, and I just wanted to bring it to light and ask publicly whether this was just a increase by Grainger in terms of their, their regular fees, or if this is, if this is a change in service, or what exactly was the cause behind the increase for refuse collection services?
Right. We negotiate annually with Grainger on that, and there is a slight increase, and so that's passed through the directory of charges.
Mr. Smith, what's your timeline for the analysis completed on, on a cost, perhaps a cost with the deposit attached, as Councilmember Ferris suggested, for the bandstand?
I've never, I've never really been part of setting up the, the agreements or the contracts for the pavilions or any of the facility use. I don't mind being part of it, to see what it takes, if there would be deposits, trash, whatever, I would think I would include the, the manager that's over, you know, Parks and Rec, and, and people who rent it out typically. Right now, I don't come up with those amounts, and I think they would be better suited to, to know what amount it might cost to, to, what would be reasonable, I guess, but I definitely don't, so I don't necessarily have an exact timeline. I think we'd probably bring it up to them and, and see how, see how we can come up with a, a reasonable charge, and then I would think we could come back and, and have a single change to the directory of charges. We haven't had a huge demand for it yet for the stage, but I agree, I mean, I agree, we've been talking about it, and I think that, that we should get the right parties involved, and I don't think it should take too long to come up with a, with a reasonable amount.
Okay. And if this is approved in its present form tonight, you do have a workaround in place, as, as kind of hinted at, if somebody comes in, it's...
The only thing we've got there is the pavilions right now, and that's kind of what they associate it with at this point. It's not the pavilion, but that's still a charge of having Rayner.
Like I said, that's something we don't have in place yet.
Councilmember Clark, based on your comments and your, your thought process on that, that would be $100 for resident, 150 for non-resident, if some, if John came in the front door today, and how does that set with your, your sense of what it should or shouldn't be?
Well, like I said, I think that, that a charge, I, I like Elaine's idea of a deposit, refundable deposit, if everything's left the way that it is. So far as a charge, if, depending on the event, I think all we need to really cover is the costs of, you know, of what the electricity use is going to be, and, and a very, very small percentage that we can put in a pot someday for maintenance, you know, because it's going to need paint, and it's going to need this or that, but I just don't think that everybody that walks in the door that, that says, "I want to rent the stage," should just be given carte blanche. I think that there should be an application to fill out, make sure it's an event that's, that's appropriate for the use of that facility. It's not like a pavilion. It's, it wasn't designed to be used by the general public, it was designed to be used by groups like John's. It was designed to be used by, if the, if the local thespians get back together and do, want to do summer stock at the stage. It was designed for that. It was designed for if there's going to be a fundraising concert to help provide funds to maintain the park. That's, that was what it was designed for. So like I said, at this point, to just open it up without having the discussions that Eric's talking about, I think that, I think that we're putting at risk a, a, an expensive, but yet specific piece of, of infrastructure that we have down there, that I just don't think that we want to, at this point, just say, excuse me, give me $100 or $150 and you can, you can use it. I think there's got to be a certain amount of qualification and proper use for that.
Perhaps we could take a look at incorporating a part of the new process for special events and closures, where the, the application form would, would inquire, what is, what is the event to first confirm that it's for a performance on the stage, rather than a, any other type of event that wouldn't be that, and, and then do some kind of qualifications that might include review by the, the chief of police and the fire chief, appropriate department heads, which would length, make the process a little lengthier, but it would protect our investment as well as a deposit, just to be on the safe side. Throw that out there for consideration, and... Perhaps Councilmember Drosha, we could just direct city staff to, to work something in that direction and present it to us in the very near, near future as a, as a amended directory of charges to...
Sounds good. Even if that means we hold out concert one more time in Griffin Park.
It's a fine facility as well, it's just...
Well, it's, okay.
I would think you should be able to do it there this year, if you want to. It's, then I think that's, that's what it was designed for.
That's our thought, was to try it out and see how the crowd shows up there and compare the, the two, so...
In my mind, that's what it was designed for.
Hey, I know you...
Okay.
Mayor Proton.
I move that we approve the directory of charges dated June 15, 2015.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the directory of charges. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 7-0. And Mr. Colburn, I believe you've got a informal direction from council to delegate that to the appropriate staff to come up with something along the lines of the guidelines we were suggesting. Item eight, regular business. A resolution 2015-31 authorizing, resolution authorizing Mayor Walts and City Administrator Raider Colburn to sign MDOT contract number 15-5317, job number 127074A as in Adam. Mr. Colburn.
Honorable mayor and councilmembers, thank you. This is in regard to the project on South Cedar Street. It's a two-phase project in which there'll be mill and fill from Oak Street to South Street, and then total reconstruct from South Street to Willow Creek Bridge. This project has now been led, it's been administered by MDOT, however, it does require authorization and signature by the city to allow them to proceed. It's proceeding forward, and they want to get started here in the latter part of July is what we're hearing.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Drosha.
I move that we consider resolution 2015-31 as having been read.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to have resolution 2015-31 considered as being read. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Do you have one to introduce?
Yes, I do. City Council Resolution Number 2015-31, authorizing Mayor Walts and City Administrator Colburn to sign MDOT contract number 15-5317, job number 127074A, introduced by Drosha, second by Bruno.
Is there any discussion on the resolution? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Resolution passes 7-0. Item 8B is a resolution, number 2015-32, changing the MERS benefits. Again, Mr. Colburn.
Honorable mayor and councilmembers, this is an annual process through MERS. We have Kathy Revels here from the HR side that communicates with MERS in regard to the process, so I introduce Kathy Revels to go over it.
Kathy Revels, Human Resource Coordinator for the City of Mason. I actually did not create this document because I wasn't here last week, but I'm very familiar with it. If you notice in your notes, last year, the council approved that the city would pay 6.13% of the ASME group, which is a union group, retirement plan. And the way that the staff agenda report was written last year, it said that, and this is the only document that I have to go by, it said that the ASME union group will pick up any and all increased cost for the current contract, which ends in 2016. So consequently, this year, the cost, which has been calculated by our finance director with numbers that we got from the actuarial of MERS, which is our retirement plan, has gone up from 11.89 to 14.76. And that's recalculated annually based on the annual actuarial that we get.
Are there any questions for Ms. Revels? Thank you, Kathy.
Mr. Mayor, may I also comment on your parks, or are we beyond that?
On, I'm sorry, the what?
On the parks, question that you had.
Of the...
Just to give you some information.
The directory of charges? I'll allow it, since we just approved what was there, and we're going to be working on amending the portion for Rayner stage.
I did try to get your attention during that discussion, but...
I apologize, I'll...
That's okay.
Go ahead.
My staff and I work on renting those parks out, and when we first had the pavilion completed, is the only time that we've ever rented it, to my knowledge. We have had inquiries about it, but we are very invested in protecting that, and that is why we set, without being able to bring a single item to you with the directory of charges, we set the charge at the same as the pavilion, because like Councilmember Clark said, there is a lot of equipment in there that can be damaged, and we expect to have more as time goes by. We also vet who is renting very carefully, make sure that it's a group that, you know, such as the Symphony or, or something like that, that would not be in there having a party. And so that's already being done. It's not formalized in a document, but we have been taking care of that, and we don't have a system at this point for a deposit for the parks, because this is the only facility in any of the parks where we would really worry about damage. There's nothing else to damage in the pavilions really, other than the bathrooms, and that's not usually the people who rent it. So I know that I will eventually get this question posed to me and be working on this, and I just wanted to give you that information.
Thank you. And also, it's, it's nice to see you walking without a crutch. Councilmember Drosha.
I move that we consider resolution 2015-32 as having been read.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to have resolution 2015-32 as having been considered read. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Do you have one to introduce?
Yes, I do. City Council Resolution Number 2015-32, defined benefit plan adoption agreement by MERS, introduced by Drosha, second by Bruno.
Is there any discussion on the resolution? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The resolution passes 7-0. Item 8C is resolution 2015-38, to amend the fiscal year 2014-2015 budget and waive the formal bid process to award the sewer inspection camera equipment rebuild project to Telespector Corporation. Mr. Colburn, would you like me just to call up Mr. Baker?
Honorable mayor and councilmembers, what I would first reference, though, is that we, we had budgeted for some of this, and we were looking at the different means of acquiring this, and I do want to call up Mr. Baker and, and Mr. Sillsby, but just to say that this is a highly necessary piece of equipment that we utilize on a fairly regular basis, particularly when there is an emergence in place. Mr. Baker, DPW Director.
Good evening. Ken Baker, Director of Public Works for the City of Mason. What you have before you is the, can you hear me now? What you have before you is the cost estimate for the, the quote that we got for fixing the sewer camera. We had put in for a grant to pay for half of the project, and when we, after it went to the grant process, that they only had a, a block grant basically for a push camera, that was all they could allot us, which was the $7,000. We were expecting like $14,000. So we did get a grant for a portion of, of the project, not as much as we wanted, that's why we had to come back to council and ask for the difference between what we thought we were going to get and what we ended up getting, so that we can get the camera rebuilt. To give you an idea, this camera's still using VHS tapes. So even finding VHS tapes now is hard, but it's going to be updated in such a way that it would be all in DVD format and a new monitor, upgrade the camera, and make it pan and tilt so we can look up sewer leads, and it helps us when we're trying to investigate sewer problems. And that's why the, the MMRMA gave us a grant, because they know that that's going to help the City of Mason as a whole down the road, is if we have a piece of equipment that we can get data off of it and support for sewer, looking for sewer issues. So on that, that's why we brought it in front of council.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Are there any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Clark.
You kind of alluded to how old this is. Can, can you tell me exactly how old it is, this system?
Well, Les could probably tell you exactly what year it was. I know it's been here way before I've been here, I know there's a story that was involved with it back, but I think Les can tell me, wasn't, the two bodies went together to buy this thing originally?
If I may indulge you for a minute, I'm going to say it was probably '82 or '83 we bought this, and if memory kind of serves me correct, we probably didn't pay that much for the whole unit at the time we bought it. Delhi Township was in need of a unit, the City of Mason was in need of a unit, so together, we scraped the money together, and I believe it was about $34,000 at the time, and bought this unit jointly, with the understanding that somewhere down the road, if one unit, one governmental agency wanted, that they would sell their half to the other. So probably within five years of us buying this, we bought out Delhi's share. And so if it's still working, I mean, it's a testimonial to Telespector, I'll tell you that for sure, but it's been around a long time, but it has had a ton of use. And like I say, we didn't spend hardly that much for it then, but now I would hate to think of what a new one would cost, so it's a good deal all the way around, it's money well spent.
That was my next question. What would a new unit cost?
100-plus.
Pardon me?
100,000-plus to get a sewer camera.
And that's with all the bells and whistles and...
That's a basic...
I mean, because I, I suspect that the one that Les bought was a couple of monkeys with a Polaroid.
No, it's not that bad. No, 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 no. No, it...
It actually was like the Flintstones down there with the hammers, chisel and stone.
Yeah, they're like 125... Yeah, they're like a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the unit that goes in a trailer. That's not a truck mount, that's a trailer mounted unit, and when you go up from there, they're in the two hundred thousand plus. So we have a piece of equipment. This upgrade's going to make it a usable piece of equipment for us for years to come, for what we do with it. We're not a, we don't go and televise sewers for a living all day long. That's when you get into the queues and some of those other, other units.
But at its age, how long do you, would you expect? I mean, if you have a nineteen eighty-two car, you're going to be hard pressed to, to find parts for it. If, if this thing even has a minor glitch or hiccup, what?
As long as Telespector's still in business, they're the company that built it, supported. Basically, the, the components of it are solid brass, it's a well-built machine, Telespector's still making parts for it. Basically, what we're having them do is rebuild the reel that, that moves the machine in and out, rebuild the pins and the guts and all the connection points, so that the new communication system will communicate with the camera. So a lot of the same parts in this machine are in what the new machines are, except that the new machines have new pins and adapters, so you can video things. So it's basically changing, upgrading the machine so it can work in the new formats and the new technology that we have, putting additional things on the motor body itself that actually drives it, that moves it up and down the sewer, so that we can have a rotating head and look up, up leads and such. So that's, that's the expense, basically, is, is making these changes and rebuilding.
Is that something that is now commonplace for every community to have?
Yes. Most communities now all have pan and tilt cameras, the idea is so that you can look up sewer leads, not just looking down the sewer as you go down. Like when we had higher contractors, all their equipment is set up that way.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Droscha.
Ken, you said they'll update it so you can record to DVD. Is that right?
It'd be, yes.
It's a little, it's a little alarming to me because DVDs are going out. Is there a chance you could get it to go to S D card?
I'm sure I could ask him that. I, I do know that the standard now when things, town's probably, but as I understand the standard, like we went and did something, they burned things on DVD, Blu-ray discs, so a permanent record. But they, a lot of them do have a port right on it, just like you do on your video recorder you have at home, you could take a U S B stick and stick in it, and that data can be put in that way. So there's multiple ways to get data off of it, but the step up from what we were using is Blu-ray or burnable DVDs, what they're going to burn the data onto, but you can also put on U S B.
Great. I'm less alarmed now.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember Droscha. That was my next question, was some type of flash memory upgrade versus DVD, but it's good to know we can still download from that to U S B memory. Any other questions for Mr. Baker? Thank you, Mr. Baker. Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we consider resolution twenty fifteen dash thirty-eight as having been read.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to have resolution number twenty fifteen dash thirty-eight as considered as being read. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Do you have one to introduce?
Yes, I do. City Council Resolution Number Twenty Fifteen Dash Thirty-Eight, amend fiscal year twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen budget and waive the formal bid process to award the rebuilding of the sewer inspection camera equipment to Telespector Corporation, introduced by Droscha, seconded by Bruno.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the resolution? All those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Resolution passes seven zero. Item eight D is a resolution twenty fifteen dash thirty-nine, establishing Freedom of Information Act policies, procedures, and guidelines for the City of Mason. Final time, Mr. Colburn.
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, on that note, this is, a change is due to new state law, so we're updating those policies through the city clerk's office. She's worked with this, with this as well as the city attorney's office, so at this point, I would like to turn it over to Ms. Deborah Schwartznovich.
Thank you. I probably would defer to our attorney, Mr. Hitch. Did some extensive work on studying this and looking at this, and they've also, his office, provided this for another community, and so I worked with him in finalizing it, so he's probably better to speak on that. That would be okay?
Certainly. Mr. Hitch.
Mayor and city council, as set out in the summary statement, the legislature and then signed by the governor passed legislation that has significantly changed the, and made uniform the policies for charging fees for Freedom of Information requests. The, as this council can see, particularly as it relates to attachment B, the form that's to be filled out each time, the legislature was quite precise in what could and could not be considered, and how one treats certain items such as rounding, they always round down, and so there are a number of technical issues that had to be addressed, as indicated by the city clerk. One of my partners, Tom Yaden, had prepared a resolution, which has been implemented by the City of East Lansing. It, I reviewed that at that time and reviewed what the city clerk prepared, using that as an outline. It meets, in my opinion, the requirements of the law. It's a fairly complicated statute to go through, but as I assume the staff gets used to using it, it will become more routine. It does include a couple of new features. One of them, a little stricter policy as it relates to late preparation of documents, it causes a penalty to be imposed and a deduction of amounts on the fees. And secondly, new to the FOIA was an appeals process, first to the city administrator, and then to circuit court. A requestor, if it's, if that person is unhappy, can still go to circuit court, but it now allows for, and an administrative appeal to the chief administrative officer, in this case, the city administrator. So unless the council has any specific questions, it is, as I said, in my opinion, this resolution meets the requirements of the Act signed by the government, P A five sixty-three, and I would recommend that this council adopt this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Rich. Are there any questions? Councilmember Droscha.
I move that we consider resolution twenty fifteen dash thirty-nine as having been read.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to have resolution twenty fifteen dash thirty-nine considered as being read. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Do you have one to introduce?
Yes, I do. City Council Resolution Number Twenty Fifteen Dash Thirty-Nine, Resolution Establishing Freedom of Information Act Policies, Procedures, and Guidelines for the City of Mason, introduced by Bruno, seconded by Droscha.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the resolution? Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm certainly in support of the resolution. I just wanted to use the opportunity to say that I think we ought to proactively explore an open data policy as well, as we continue to be in an age where we're expected to have data readily available, not only on our website, but through other means as well, and so I think that having an updated FOIA policy is great, but I think that we also ought to look at how we treat data and how we make that public, not only with what's required, but how we can be proactive with that. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Resolution passes seven zero. Unfinished business, Councilmember Droscha.
None.
Councilmember Mulvaney. Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes, very briefly, at the last meeting, I mentioned one of the things I, I want to make sure that we have during the transition is the latest copy of our notes or minutes from the, the second Goals and Objectives meeting, and so not necessarily as a discussion item on an agenda, but just so that we have the latest record of that for use, not only with our interim city administrator, but also our permanent as well. And so I would just place that back on the radar for administration. Thank you.
Councilmember Ferris.
None.
Councilmember Clark.
None.
Councilmember Bruno.
Yes. Did we get an answer on the item of the trash can for the parking lot for the bridge at the River Walk?
Yes, we did. And I, Mr. Colburn has some supporting documentation, but roughly by what was, what the trash can was specked out to be was a duplicate of what the D D A has selected and approved, which is a fairly hefty, not as in fifty-five gallon drum rubber hefty, but fairly robust container, that with shipping and purchase price installation is about seventeen hundred dollars. Here is, it's, it's item number four thirty-eight up here. I'll pass this down to you.
So even talking that, we're still going to spend twenty-seven hundred dollars for this trash can.
We had, we had delegated that to staff to administratively work out. Is that a Mr. Haywood question, who was here earlier?
No, I'm, I certainly can answer it. Keep in mind that this is a bid as the whole, and the overall bid was, and I'm going by recollection, and Eric, I think it was approximately twenty thousand, or was it thirty thousand? I think it was twenty thousand lower. So where, where they put a little bit of their, I'll say profit ratio and whichever line item, the overall budget or bid was approximately twenty thousand lower than any other bid presented to city council.
Yes. New business, Councilmember Droscha.
None.
Councilmember Mulvaney.
None.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
I have no new business.
Councilmember Ferris.
None.
Councilmember Clark.
None.
Councilmember Bruno.
I really wasn't finished with the trash can yet, even though the bid overall was low. And if we're saying that we can purchase this trash can ourself and install it for seventeen hundred dollars, I can't see spending twenty-seven. So I am still, even though we're going to go ahead with it, I'm just expressing my displeasure with purchasing a twenty-seven hundred dollar trash can regardless of the bid being good and low.
Duly noted. We can send that message back that in the future, we would not like to see a little inflationary addition to line items such as that. I have no new or unfinished business. Correspondence, you have monthly revenue and expenditure report and an email from Tim Morgan. Liaison reports. Historic District Commission, Councilmember Mulvaney.
No new activity since the last council meeting.
Traffic Commission, Councilmember Droscha.
We meet July twenty-second, right here, five thirty.
Tree Commission, Councilmember Ferris.
No new reports. We still have opportunities for the sesquicentennial trees, and the forms are available online or at City Hall, since I just picked up one up. In addition, I am, have been attending the Parks and Trails Committee meeting, and that is next Monday night. Thank you.
Planning Commission, Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Planning Commission met last week on Tuesday, and we continued ongoing discussions regarding the medical marijuana ordinance and the, the work that that subcommittee is doing, as well as the subcommittee looking at an amendment to our master plan for the subarea planning sections. For both of those items, you can expect to see public input processes occurring during the month of June and the month of July, so be on the lookout for those notices of, of ways to participate and give input on both subject matters. And other than that, it was a relatively straightforward meeting, and the Planning Commission also bid a fond farewell to our city administrator.
The D D A meets on July first. Administrator's report, or councilmembers' reports first. Any councilmembers have a report for the council this evening? Hearing none, we will go back to the administrator's report. Mr. Colburn.
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, I was asked to give a, kind of an out briefing in regard to many of the projects and items that we have been working on. So this communication was intended to hit those highlights, but not by any means cover every day-to-day operations. In terms of the quick overview, the Lansing Street and Washington Street water lines and streets are in progress. We've got the asphalt down in total over on Lansing Street and Washington Street. There's still about a hundred feet up to Maple, in which if, if the weather holds out, they'll actually start laying some on the most eastern portion, lathered part of this week. They've got the curb and gutters going in place, and they've now tore up the portion of Maple Street going into phase two along in front of Leyland Park and going westbound. South Cedar Street, you had a quick report on that, is that it's moving forward by M dot, so we're moving forward on that project. Kip Road, we are finalizing and got the communication from the state in terms of the signals that that's moving forward in both the intersections of Kip and Jefferson and Kip and Cedar Street. And that also has some sidewalk on the north side of the road. Also, I wanted to point out, Gestamp did provide us a, a cash bond two years ago until we could work through this process with the county and the state with the intersection lights, so that portion in the corner of Gestamp will be finished up, as well as per directive of the Planning Commission. The West Columbia Street Sidewalk staff is meeting with M dot this, later this week, working on that. The hundred-block alley between South Jefferson and Barnes, we're working with consumers in terms of them and their timeliness of gas lines. I don't expect them to get back with us in a timely fashion with the electrical lines, but that's moving forward. One twenty-four, one forty, East Ash Street renovation. This is coming along extremely well, that most of it will be completed by July fourth. I suspect later in July, they'll have a nice event for the city council and all the participants to participate in, but that, that's a very exciting project, as we're coming close to the end of that with the ten units and Oracle Financial Group ultimately taking ownership of that project. I, I do have a great concern in terms of some of the current legislation in front of the state legislature and how it impacts three sixty-eight, South Jefferson Street Loft Apartments, one fifty-four, West Maple Street, Mason Shoe Store, and the Dart Insurance Building, one hundred, East Ash Street. You start pulling these all together, and there's roughly fourteen more lofts, and with the change of this legislation, it's possible that one or more of these projects will fall through. Basically, to fund the roads, they're taking a hundred and fifty-three million was the last number that I read from M E D C, and so what it will do is, is gut some of the programs, which will then influence other programs. The C D B G dollars themselves will survive, because those are federal dollars, but a lot of the matching dollars from M E D C will not, as well as a lot of the staff that would help implement these programs. So I am greatly concerned that we're solving one problem and creating another one. We also have a root building, one sixty, East Ash Street, and a couple of citizens that are working together, the Kelseys, on, on trying to move forward on a, a really, again, I, I call it the next tier of projects for the City of Mason, and that is a, what they call a white box and new building, and in essence, it would be commercial on the main floor and second and third floors apartments. Now, this building doesn't exist yet. It would require tearing down one of the smaller buildings, and that discussion has already taken place at the Historic District Commission. Hall Memorial Library, we hit on some of that with the report tonight, and in the C I P is the concept of the bathrooms over in the east side, where basically the garages, which was originally built back in, I believe, nineteen sixty-seven, they did that add-on. And it can work, it's just, as the old saying goes, it's just a matter of money, but it is in the C I P and is a, a discussion point for future councils to determine the priorities. Hayhoe River Walk, the trailheads, we've got two trailheads going in. The M dot grant came in literally at the last. The MDOT grant came in literally at the last minute. It's approximately $40,000, and that's for the south one. And the northern one is already in progress. I talked to Brian Quinn from Rees-Lawrie last week, and they're starting to build the bridge, and that'll take six to eight weeks to build. The study is proceeding in regard to the nonprofits with the Riverwalk and how that may tie into Delhi and the City of Mason along, our portion will be along Howell Road to US 127. And as you may recall, the study that came out, trying to identify, and they did identify and prioritize the route across 127, that being a bridge, pedestrian bridge. There's quite a bit of discussion, approximately $20 million. I know Councilmember Ferris has been attending those meetings, and when we met with Mr. Morgan, he actually referenced that, the participation of Mason at those meetings. So I appreciate that because I think they'll, they'll recognize the priority possibility for the City of Mason and Delhi on those projects. But there's $20 million on the table over the next five and a half years and something worth paying attention to. Raynor Park Lease and Purchase, you saw Mr. Morgan's response that we did the walkthrough. He was very impressed with what we've accomplished. I hand-walked the $1 check, the annual check to the county treasurer's office, and they know that we're paid in full up to the final payment of $1 after they've done the survey. They have ordered up the survey. It's not done to date, but I expect it'll get done sometime this summer. Want to thank the Friends of Raynor Park. They've really stood tall in regard to all the work, and hopefully the community will continue to stay behind them as they do good works to support Raynor Park and the community of Mason. As you know, some of the other improvements in there, the Little League Field, the Raynor Park Stage, and some of the materials that the Friends have purchased. Please take note, in the furthest bridge, they replaced a few weeks ago. So there's another new bridge in there in the backside. Ingham County Fairgrounds, working with them has been very positive, and Sandy Dargatz is talking to us about the possible 50,000-square-foot exposition center. I think that'd be a great add to the fairgrounds in terms of updating properties and facilities to meet the growing needs. They have projects going on now almost every weekend throughout the year, many of them horse-related. Parking Lot Number Three is under construction behind the Hilliard Building. It not only helps with the, you know, updating and keeping healthy our parking, but shows good faith to the county, and hopefully will ask them to show good faith back to the city. And I'll get into some of those discussions here in a minute. Dart Bank is proceeding forward. You can see the construction. Staff went to the Michigan Strategic Fund Meeting, and that brownfield, went through the Ingham County Brownfield Development Authority, was approved by the state and got that support. So that was a very important and promising step forward. Well Number Eight and Number Nine are proceeding forward, and we had the LDFA meeting last week. Meeting went well. They continue to support the project. It is, however, only four and a half years away from the LDFA sunsetting. I just want to note that date, that that's coming. I referenced the sheriff's office of the county, the sheriff's office in jail. I met with the county controller last week in regard to a number of different county issues. And they're thinking at this point now, it's closer to a $75 million project in regard to the sheriff's office in jail. We talked about keeping that in Mason as Lansing has showed some interest, and I gave them a number of reasons as to why it needs to continue to be here. The first reason, of course, is Mason is the county seat. Lansing has a city income tax and Mason does not, which would adversely affect the county staffs, employees, and their salaries. Mason is centrally located within the county as a whole. The 55th District Court is next door to those facilities, which is necessary when transporting, and some of the prisoners are here too, not just all in Lansing, as well as the Circuit Court in downtown Mason. The county administration is in downtown Mason in terms of how they interact. County has available land at the current location, and Mason has free parking, whereas Lansing does not. Matter of fact, that's quite a fee for the employees. We just saw the state police move out of Lansing because of some of the negative impacts on their employees with some of those issues. We also spoke about the Ingham County Animal Control Shelter. They're wanting to expand that facility. And realistically, they want to build a new facility. It's just a matter of money. And I don't say that lightly. They're trying to figure out how to fund that. The facilities, however, are there. They recommended that they stay there. And I point out to the council, if absolutely necessary, that you do have property in the immediate facility that could be helpful if, if that leverage is needed. And that's where the old well number two is. Food Truck Ordinance, staff is working on. City Clerk Schwarzenegger has met with staff and bringing together different influences necessary for that review. And now it's going in front of the different public agencies of the Planning Commission, Historic District Commission, the DDA, and the Mason Area Chamber of Commerce. So she is working diligently on that. Expect that there'll be a draft after that goes to them and continued markups come back to council by August. The Sesquicentennial Celebration Committee continues to meet, and the most upcoming events are coming in around the 4th of July. Reference the legacy tree program that's been tied to that. We've already had three and a half dozen trees planted, and we already have another five, I believe, ordered. So that's proceeding in good, good order. The Planning Commission is working in two areas on subarea planning, so you'll see more of that information developed through the Mayor Pro Tem. I know is the liaison, no doubt, but will be responding to some of that. The Mason Public School Stormwater on Barnes Road, this is basically an issue that's primarily between private property owners and the school district. We were brought into it early on and basically released in terms of any liability, but we have found that we are in the right position to help facilitate the corrective action. Ultimately, when you build through development, this infrastructure, the city would take ownership. And by helping to resolve these two agencies, one private, one public, first of all, it wasn't in the public interest in terms of the expenses to the school district of what they were having to deal with, their attorneys and engineers. So we've been able to get them together at the table, work through the problem of placing a new stormwater facility in place, and they would be paying for that, not the city by any means. Ultimately, though, they wouldn't want to turn that back over to the city, which is what we would do when there's a development there. But what it will also do is help those property owners develop their properties, which we want to see. We've been talking about how that can happen. And I see it as truly a resolution, though, and a win for the school district as well. Medical Marijuana continues to go through the subcommittee in the Planning Commission, and they're working diligently on that. The Community Medical Facilities, I know that Sparrow has talked to us for a long time, and they're still working through their issues, but they've not made a public commitment yet. As a matter of fact, as recent as two weeks ago at a LEAP meeting, they referenced their properties, and it was very obvious to the City of Mason that Mason was not referenced in their report. I hope that they will continue to make a commitment to this community through placing facilities within the city. And Capital Regional Airport, they are looking at wanting to give those properties to another government agency. We're basically asking them to provide us information on the property. But at this point, LCC is an interested partner as well, since they're looking at expanding their projects. So I see that as a possible lead for future development, and that'll be something that the city council will want to watch and pay attention and participate in future discussions. On the fire truck replacement, the fire chief has the direction to proceed forward with the fire apparatus, and he's working on that in terms of the specifications. He expects that to be able to be purchased within six to 10 months. Police Department staffing, we're working diligently. Sergeant Hutter will be retiring 40 years from the city service in September 2014. So we'll be filling his slot as well as the 13th position that was authorized under this most recent budget that you authorized. And we've had one officer who had finalized and left the service of the city, Officer Gerard. Police Reserve Program, chief is moving forward. He's advertised for positions. We have two openings, as you know, to proceed forward with that. The City of Jackson will be supporting the city in terms of providing the training support at no cost to the city. The dump truck is in progress. The last I knew, it was about six weeks away, and that was last week. Anything new on that, Ken? Okay. So that, that is in progress, and we should have that before the next snow blows. The wastewater treatment plan, the Headworks Project is moving forward. As you know, we're working with Prehn and Newhoff, and they're put together some concepts and sat down with staff, working through those and designing. 224 South Jefferson, this is property in the downtown. This is for a future discussion of the council. I've recommended the opportunity made because of the way the downtown is, and certainly something that the Planning Commission will take a look at. But that property be available for future development as it's right in our historic downtown, and it could be another positive attribute as the downtown continues to grow. Now, this report is not intended to be all-inclusive, but it highlights a lot of the major issues that we've been working on and are currently in progress, particularly during the summer. The construction projects that we're working on are pretty significant. We have a lot of infrastructure projects, water, sanitary streets, wastewater. You know, there's a lot happening, a lot of moving parts. So also, hopefully, this will help as we transition to give an overview. I want to thank Councilmember Elaine Ferris. As, as I was putting this together, she came in and helped me package it, and I thank you for your time and your diligence. If you have any questions on these projects, please feel free. If there's something that was not left on here, was not inadvertently left out as it was, there was only so many items to put in there. I think I have about 40 that I covered. And again, as I said, it was not intended to be all-inclusive.
Thank you, Mr. Colburn. Sure.
One last thing. After 16 years here, I want to thank this council, the council that hired me, and all the councils in between of serving with them. Mason, I think you know I found a home here that really will always be a fun spot in my heart. I have a neighborhood of extended family now that, having lived in, we became a very tight group and will forever be a part of my life and family. So I thank all of you for that, and to the many people in this community that continue to help pitch in, and the staff. It's been a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Colburn. Any questions? The administrator? Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to say that I prepared a lengthy cross-examination for the city administrator tonight, but I'd-
And we would not be surprised.
But I did just want to say, use this opportunity at this last meeting to say thank you for your many years of service. Best of luck in Traverse City, and please send us some cherry goods whenever you think of us.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. With that, we are adjourned.